Hello, everybody. I'm Michael Brown from Montgomery College Television and I'm going to be your moderator today. We're at the Gaithersburg Business Training Center and Dr. Pollard is very excited to be hosting her second Town Hall of 2014. Now, as always, if you're watching online and you're nearby, we'd love to have you come over and join us. My main job is to make sure that Dr. Pollard stays focused on all of your questions. And for those questions, if you're watching online, you can email them to townhall@montgomerycollege.edu and we're going to try to get to as many questions online and here in the room as we possibly can. Now, without further ado, here is Dr. Pollard.
Thank you very much. So those of you who live here know there's a train. Those of you who are online and it's going to come and go and we're going to work around it because that's life, right? All right, we're going to do that. I want to thank you all for being here today. What I'd like to do is to start off with a couple of points as a follow-up from last time's Town Hall meeting and then do a few introductory comments. If I can get that out done in 10 minutes, we'll open up the floor. I do know about four or five questions have already come in electronically. I know people in the room have questions, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Feel free to come in, it's not a problem. Let me start off with a follow-up. Several of you may have been with me this morning. I know I see two in particular. We were at the Women's and Gender Studies Scholarship Lunch Breakfast this morning. It was so wonderful. Firming, 27 students were recognized with scholarships. We had, I think, five staff members who were recognized for allowing us to stand on their shoulders with the work that we do. So congratulations to those students and to those staff members for the work that they do and making sure that this college actualizes its mission in terms of supporting students and being real in the community. The other thing that I would offer to you is that we have lots of good stuff happening. Next week is spring break. I know that many of us are going to be very excited about that. There are a few of us who are going to be working next week and I'll talk about that momentarily because it relates directly to the budget. But before I do that, let me follow up. Last time, there was a question that came to me about shuttle service. So I wanted to highlight that right now, the college is conducting a comprehensive review for implementing a college-wide shuttle service. I know that we had one before. It went away. We're looking to explore that right now. We're evaluating several models. Dr. Womack reminds me that we can't have my purple buses take over Montgomery County. She should put her head down. That we have to operate within some parameters, so she's working on that. And then we anticipate making a decision regarding the shuttle service, whether or not we implement it in May of 2014. So keep your eyes and ears peeled on that. Have a good task force working on that and look forward to hearing from them. And there was also a question that was raised to me about faculty compensation. I want to thank, I'm blanking on her name, the faculty member who raised this twice. Now, what is her name, Steve? Sanita Kim, thank you. She's raised this before. So before I open the floor for questions after my comments here, I just want to address the fact that, you know, this was raised. We're looking at it seriously and it requires some very careful review because there are several institutional practices that have to be looked at that. Currently, in the short term, we are addressing expressed concerns on a case-by-case basis as appropriate. These issues, and I'm reading this because I got this directly from HRED and I don't want to mess it up, right? We know that the issues were raised in a broader context such as methodology, philosophy, process, or practice are going to be reviewed in the future because there are two components to this process. How we assess employees and their records, and this particularly relates to faculty directly because that was a question, and then how we place them once they come here. So that's a very big issue. It's going to be a well-sequenced and developed plan. That's in process. Before we conduct this review, they're going to do some work on the overarching compensation philosophy and the goals as it relates to the college and looking at how we relate this to our own talent management, our strategic plan, our destination employer work, how all of these things fit together and understanding more in-depth the workforce that we have at the college. Please know that we're looking at identifying gaps. We're creating solutions and we're looking at best practices. I think this is an important thing. Sometimes we tend to operate as if we are in isolation, that we're the only college in the country that has these types of issues. I think not only just regionally we can look at, but we can also look nationally at some of these issues. I do know that our newest, one of our newest vice presidents, Nadine Porter, is taking this on very seriously. I met with her about a week ago, her and Janet. We sat down and this is one of the issues she's going to be looking at. So Sanita, thank you for continuing to raise this. I do know that this is an issue that's near and dear to us in lots of different ways and we're going to continue to work on that. So those are follow-ups from last time. I want to get a couple of plugs and a few issues. One, I do know that we're in the process right now of governance elections for this next year. I'm hopeful that each and every one of you will take an opportunity to be active in that process. I heard just yesterday from Tacy, we were talking, Dr. Halliday, and she was sharing that the WDCE Council has actually been one of the most active and thoughtful councils in terms of the work that you're doing. So thank you for your leadership in that regard. I'm hopeful that each of you will continue to be actively engaged in that process. While we're doing that, we're also preparing for the budget. So as you might imagine, typically, the county executive has always seemingly released his budget the Friday prior to our spring break. For reasons that we don't know, that's going to be actually released on Monday of spring break. So several of us will be at the meeting where he releases the budget and then we'll be making phone calls and immediately the day after appearing before the county council as raised to our capital budget and starting a series of meetings as it relates to our operating budget. We do know that because it is Monday, we'll send something out. Please check your email so that you can know what his recommendation is and then we'll start to strategize with that. In fact, Dr. Womack, the following Monday, I believe, has a meeting with the board's budget committee. One of the things we'll talk about is a strategy based on that recommendation there. We'll need your help in this process, so please look out for emails and messages from various folks in the college community, in particular, me, Susan Madden, any of our campus provosts, about how we're going to spend time working and advocating in that regard. We do know that the Maryland State Budget and Tax Committee recommended $1 million more for community colleges that be included in the BRF, or as they call it, the Budget Reconciliation and Finance Act. We're waiting to see how that plays itself out. They've also recommended enhancing the Cade formula. So that, those of us who know, many times, a few of you catch me on the phone or I talk to, I'm on my way back and forth to Annapolis. Here's why, because we're in there making sure that while the smallest portion actually of our budget comes from the state, it's significant for us. We spend a lot of time working with that. Our students have been active. They were in Annapolis last week advocating and actually making their, and they were just, the best thing we can do is when we go up to Annapolis, just step out of the way and let them do the talking because they make real what we do very much so. I have seen, and hopefully you all saw, the academic restructuring communication that went out Monday. Monday. I really want to thank Dr. Rye, Ms. Terry, and all the hundreds of people who have been active in this process. It has been a labor of love. I think it is a watershed moment for us at the college. I'm looking forward to seeing and having more thoughtful conversations with Dr. Rye regarding the recommendations he's made to me. I read them while I was on vacation, so I'm very excited and I'm looking forward to some continued work in that regard. The other thing I would offer to you, I just want to thank our facilities and security team for their work. Do please make sure that you share, and those of you who are watching, all the work they've done. One, managing the snow. It seems like we have snow every other day around here. This is, I feel like I'm in Chicago right now. We're enjoying it. Thank them for everything they're doing. And also our security staff for the work they've been doing in managing the issues we've had around the graffiti and the work they've done. You've all seen lots of communicate about that. I'm not going to talk at length about it unless a question comes up here, but really want to thank them for being proactive and also responsive. That means so much to me. The last thing I'll probably highlight, a couple of kudos. English professor Emily Rosado has been named the Maryland Distance Learning Association Individual of the Year. You may recall that I shared with you last time, she was on the, she is on the short list for Faculty Innovation Award from AACC. So, you know, she's developed this open online, massive open online course, Get Ready for College English. So congratulations to her. Beth would kill me if I did not tell you all to make sure you go out and do your plug on the communication survey, talking about how the college can be effective in communicating. We've had, I'm going to tell you, one of the students are kicking everybody's butt, just in percentage and in numbers. They're, they're sharing their information, so I'm hopeful that each of you will continue to be a part of that. So those are all the introductory comments I'd like to make. I'm going to turn it over to my sidekick here, who's going to pose the questions that have come in, but also take them from the audience.
We're going to start right here in the room, right here in the front row.
The lovely college colors on.
Thank you, Dr. Pollard, first of all, for coming here to Gaithersburg. We greatly appreciate you being here.
Love being here.
I have two questions and you can choose which one to answer first. With regard to the college restructuring plans, recently, an outside organization with whom I routinely work asked me to connect them with an office responsible for renting a room on campus, at one of the campuses, for some meetings. In order for me to do that, I found that I personally had to contact each campus facility's office. At some point, will this be restructured to have one central location or one program that all three or however many facilities' offices can look at at the same time? And to my second-
Let me answer that one. So it's over there. One, I don't know. I do know that right now, the restructuring, we've tended to focus right now on curriculum issues, structure issues, to look at that alignment in that regard. And this is a very delicate balance because one of the things, we want to make sure we centralize things in a way to create a common student experience, a common employee experience. But the part that you're also emphasizing are those who are external stakeholders, how they also view the organization. And that can be very, and having worked with a group myself who wanted to get some space on here, it was, it was very interesting to help them navigate it without me picking up the phone because it's a different response when I pick up the phone, right? So trying to help them navigate it was, is an interesting one. I don't know that. I do know that we have been implementing the, we don't call it R-25 here, what do we call it?
Schedule 25.
Schedule 25. And I do know that that will allow us to have some commonality, but I know there's a whole lot of upfront input of data that has to be done very effectively for that to work. But let me have a conversation with administrative and fiscal services and then also academics and see where that plays in. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And my second question, and I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Karen Ambrose from WDCE here in Gaithersburg. My second question is, are there plans to offer another verb?
So the second question was, are there plans to offer another verb? Now, interestingly enough, there could be plans. And to be quite frank, I haven't even started thinking about that yet because we're still in the midst of implementing the one that we have. Typically, the things I can tell you about what I know having done this at other institutions, a next version of a verb will not be as lucrative or as incentivized as a first version. So you have to think about that. Then we have to weigh what we anticipate to be the long-term financial projections of the institution, also look at our collective bargaining agreements, and also look at what we think the county and state is going to be doing. I do know that Dr. Womack is working right now on a three-year budget model and our intent is to be able to have that and know how we go forward. I do know, though, that many organizations look at this as something that it might be something to help with the budget scenarios, but we haven't informally or formally talked about that. So my response is perhaps, or perhaps not. All right. You're welcome. Yes, sir.
All right, we have another question from the audience, right here. Stand up.
My name is Tom Hollins. I work in auxiliary services in the bookstore.
Nice to meet you.
I am the tech buyer and-
I've got an email for me. It's nice to put a face with a name.
I get your emails and I forward them to you. I just want to say, if the directors in my unit were as forthcoming with questions as you are, we wouldn't be in the predicament that we're in right now. People in my unit are actually afraid to ask questions, so I admire what you're doing.
Thank you.
And I never thought I would be as baffled by a decision that I would bother the president of the college, but here it is.
That's all right, make yourself.
Auxiliary Services just spent over $30,000 to have a consulting company come in and analyze its bookstore operations, management practices, to see what services need to be improved. Shockingly, only three people of all in auxiliary services were allowed to read the full report, director of auxiliary services and her two associate directors. None of the bookstore managers and none of the bookstore's regular staff have been permitted to read the full report. The only thing the managers and staff have been given is a 30-page executive summary report by the directors of the full study, which is hundreds of pages long. The directors are claiming the full report is confidential. At two colleges where the same study was done, all the managers were permitted to read the full report, so the confidential designation does not seem to fit. In other words, the directors are saying that it would be a violation of this consultant's company confidentiality rights to share it with the managers of the bookstore, which, I'm sorry, I don't understand. So how can the bookstore management team be prohibited from reading a $30,000 report that was designed to upgrade their management practices? And where is the transparency in this?
Okay. So a couple of things. Thank you, Tom, for the question. So the red herring in that question is $30,000, so to be very, very clear, people always get caught up in the fact that the report costs $30,000 or if it costs $300,000. That's really not the issue. That the report was paid for out of auxiliary services, which is not a part of our operating dollars. So I always like to say that because people don't always understand how those things play themselves out, just as capital is separate from operating. So that's the first thing I'll say. The other thing you should know is I haven't read the report. An interesting part about that is that there is a, I don't know about the practices of other institutions. I don't know about the consulting firm in terms of what their privacy issues are in that regard. What I have been told, and I think is an important point, oftentimes, these reports contain personnel issues. And I will be very frank with you and speaking in transparency, as I always try to do, I suspect that is exactly what this report has, some personnel types of issues in it. And we tend not to, as an organization, try to distribute information that will have commentary about individuals or groups of people that can actually be attributed to a person. And given the size of our bookstore, while it's very large for a lot of entities, it's still very small that you might actually be able to attribute certain comments or recommendations, excuse me, to a specific person. That being said, I have somebody who's sitting directly to your right who can help me in making sure that I'm responding appropriately to that. So Dr. Womack, with your flashy shirt on, can you give us some questions?
Can I have some comments today?
Please, please.
So I'd say three things about the bookstores and our auxiliary services operation. Number one, I want to thank Kathy Carey Fletcher and her team and her management team and for all the staff in the bookstore. They spent a day with me reviewing and discussing the outcome and the executive summary, basically, and the suggested recommendations from the bookstore analysis. We did an information sharing session where we talked about what was in that report, what they looked at, what was their methodology. So I think the consultant did an excellent job of presenting the information and summarizing it for everyone in the bookstore. I also want to thank Kathy Carey Fletcher and her team because we sat down, she did a case study as a part of this, bringing triangulating data, we call it. She did a case study on what the future of auxiliary services bookstores look like. And so she was able to create and help, help us talk about where we're going in the future with the bookstores. So the third thing I want to say is, the managers and I sat down this past week and talked about where we're going with auxiliary services. What should it look like in the future? What do our students need? What do they want? What do other campus bookstores look like? We know that books are sort of, the book part of the bookstore is going down, right? We're not selling as many books anymore. There's a different, you know, the internet is there, information is available online. So we've taken it as an opportunity to redesign auxiliary services, redesign the bookstore. We're having those conversations. And they're going to be pulling together a business plan and a business model for how they want to look into 2020 that aligns with the college's 2020 plan. So I think that's very exciting. And certainly, they've already gotten started on the strategic recommendations that the bookstore consultant provided to us. They started those, looking at the, I think there were 11 strategic initiatives that we should address, and they started looking at those and they've been working on those. And we're going to continue to work on those. But yes, there is confidential information in that bookstore study that we're not going to share under the, you know, the rights of confidentiality for both the college and our employees. But we thank you for the question and I'm certainly happy, Tom, to sit down and talk with you about anything you want to know about it. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Thank you, Janet.
All right, our next question is an online question. It comes from Owen Powers. And Owen Powers is the manager of the Science Learning Center in Tacoma Park Silver Spring and he is the manager of the Science Learning Center. Has MC ever considered forming partnerships with four-year colleges who could supply MC with teaching assistance, assistance for courses or tutors/mentors for the various learning centers? Thanks.
I don't know if we have. Have, do those of you who have, we have? We've done that before? So yes. We have done that before. I think it might be a great opportunity. I actually think it's a great idea to be more robust than that. There's always a compensation factor in that. People don't typically volunteer their time, but I think there are ways in which we can explore. You know, I was thinking, when I was at the College of Lake County, we also had a similar initiative where we were bringing doctoral students in from our University of Illinois Chicago campus and they were teaching in our English program. It was a very neat cohort program that got quite a bit of national attention in that regard because the literature tells us that very few people are prepared to teach at a community college. They may be prepared for professorship, they may be prepared for corporate work, but very seldom are they, and they're actually prepared better for K-12 than they are to teach at community colleges. So it was a very interesting program. So yes, we have done it. I think we'll, I'll suggest to Ms. Terry that you, the academic affairs might look at this and see how we can expand it. Great idea.
Okay, we have another question from here in the room.
Hi, Dr. Pollard. I'm Ray Kimball with the Tech Leap Program. Nice to see you again. First of all, I want to thank the Board of Trustees and you for all of your support to WDCE and our Gaithersburg Training Center and other training centers. For example, this classroom we're sitting in is a new classroom that you and the Board of Trustees funded to help our next 10-year plan. We're in our second decade here in Gaithersburg and you built us three new classrooms and this is one of them. And we're delighted them, delighted with them and we're using them to capacity already in the one year that we've put them together.
I think we had to move somebody for us to be in here today.
We had to move all the administrators down to the third floor and us program directors up here, we really like that. So that's number one. And the three topics, and I'm not going to get into great detail about them, I'm also going to bring up with the WDCE Council, which, you know, I have the privilege of being on and, and so these are the type of issues that come up. One is scholarships. With the end of long-term unemployment insurance, I'm finding in my program and we're finding generally that students are requesting more scholarships. And so I have a few more needs and I'm going to need to be addressing that here within the Tech Leap Scholarship Program, the WDCE Scholarship Program. And we may, we may need to talk with the foundation also. We're, we're seeing, we're seeing more stress out there with the long-term unemployed. And unfortunately, we're seeing that, you know, the job market is a little bit down and we really need to talk with you and anybody who wants to talk with us about more planned internships for adult students. There are many summer internships that are planned for undergraduates, but we don't have that kind of plan with our local businesses for adult students, which could be summer internships or other internships. And that's a very big need here in workforce development and especially in IT and in the Tech Leap Program. So those would be two things that would be a great practical help for us to all work on together as a college. The second one is marketing. This is probably a little bit more focused in on our own needs. So scholarships, scholarships and internships for training experience is the first one. The second one on marketing is, you know, there's that big splash part on the Montgomery College homepage that shows, you know, pictures of trips to Paris and, and events happening at the college of all of that. And I think we'd like to talk with Institutional Advancement about having some more of the programs here at WDCE splashed on that homepage. So, you know, that, that should be a fairly easy one, but we need to work on that a little. The other one is all of the great work you've done on the One College Initiative, which we wholly support here in WDCE. We're doing a lot to help with that. One of the areas that I'm kind of going to bring up is in these new welcome centers where folks come in and get brochures. And there are brochures out there, not done by us, that continue to refer to workforce development and continuing education as career enhancement. Well, we're not really about career enhancement. We're about careers and career change and career development. And so we need a little bit more coordination on the brochures that are being put into the various welcome centers so that students aren't confused and there's a little bit more information coordinated between credit programs and non-credit programs about what's actually offered. Also, in one of these brochures that's out there right now that says for adult learners, it doesn't even list the workforce development as our fourth campus. So we do need to try to coordinate on some of those things a little bit more for the welcome centers, which we think is a great idea. So there are my practical comments. I hope they're practical and, you know, not too self-centered, but I hope they give some ideas that we can work on over the coming six months or so.
Thank you, Ray. And I would tell you, it is completely appropriate to be self-centered sometimes, particularly when you're trying to make it an informed opinion known to other people. So I add it right down the point so I wouldn't forget your four multipart question or comment. And I'll start with the top. Right now, if you look at, we're actually preparing to move into a comprehensive campaign, $30 million over the, by 2020, and a large portion of that is scholarships. And we've been very deliberate as we've crafted the literature around this and as I am already out talking with our prospective donors, that we're looking at scholarship money for both credit and non-credit programs. We make a very clear case to them about why it's so essential for our non-credit programs to be able to have access to scholarship money. And that's having resonance because of the second point that you made, this issue of internships and the connection to the business world. We've already raised $3 million thus far toward the campaign. And what's very exciting about this, I think, is that there's a greater cognizance around the work that happens in WDCE. And I would tell you, you are the largest part of the institution and in terms of enrollment, that's a very important thing to know. And oftentimes, we don't talk about that in a very real way that it should be talked about. You all have heard me talk about this for years. So this is a part of our own, not just MC, it is academic elitism in higher education. That's what it comes down to. And we have to start to unpack that in ways that can be very real. This issue of internships is so critical because what we're hearing from the workforce folks when we sit down with them, they're talking about the facts that their students, they may come to us with skills, but they don't have the ability to translate those skills into a work environment. The other thing they're telling us very clearly is that sometimes, the academic portion of what you're teaching them may not be as relevant to what's happening in the workforce. So we need to have those opportunities for students. So I completely agree with you. One of our trustee members is so adamant about this, he wants to actually look at revising our complete advisory board process because it's a very critical point that we have to look at these things very differently. So I concur with you on that. Marketing, we know that we've got a marketing issue. Part of our marketing issue is that we are a large institution. And what I find amazing is that every once in a while, I get lots of that comes through my desk and I'm always struck by the fact that we have a number of brochures that are self-produced, right? So folks say, oh, here's my little program, you know, I'm not going to call Beth, shop and try to get this done. I'm just going to make it myself. I make it myself, I put it together. So as a result of that, what happens? We don't have a common vernacular about how we talk about the things within the institution. We don't have a common understanding of what things we're trying to advance and we're typically looking at it from our one little piece of the pie, right? Our little pie, we're missing the whole rest of the pie. So that's a very significant issue that we're looking at. We are in the process of doing a couple of things in that regard. One, in terms of the website, we are going to, within the very near couple of months, go out when we complete this communication survey, is to redo our website. We keep hearing this, since I've got in the door, people are saying we need to do the website over. I go, oh! But we also have to have a serious conversation about what the purpose of a website is, right? And I, having maybe last semester, spent some time with the response center for a couple of hours, I was amazed at how much they use the college's website for information gathering, right? And I kept thinking, but shouldn't they also be using our portal for this type of information? So I think we have to have a substantive conversation as an institution about what does a website do? What should our internal portal be doing? Or do we eliminate one and really advance the other? Or do we eliminate one and really advance the other? What does that really mean? Do we also want to live out loud the way we do on a website? Because there are lots of things, and if you're going to say, we're going to put all these things on a website, if it's a public website that doesn't have restrictions on it, there's lots of information that floats about the institution. And I told you all before I came here, I probably spent, I spent hours on Montgomery College's website. I learned about stuff. I was like, really? I bet they don't know this is still on the website, right? So there are some very thoughtful things we have to have about that, and it is a massive undertaking. We have, how many webpages do we have, Beth, associated with our website?
Hundreds.
Hundreds of thousands. So we're talking about a big, a big process. Maybe there's an opportunity for us to figure out how we use our programs that could be a part of that, but that's it. And the last point, in terms of, I guess that goes to the literature. I agree the Welcome Center should have appropriate information in it, accurate information in it. Carolyn, I'm going to ask you to do me a favor and just remind me, have a conversation with Beverly about this, so that we can make sure that we have that information. But also, part of that has to be looking at, we all have to take responsibility about these brochures we're producing. You know, are we using the right language? Are we being inclusive? Are we making sure that we're encompassing the One College philosophy? So thank you very much. Yes, sir. Y'all know as early as he said his job is to keep me in focus. I was responding to his question.
You were. You were focused.
Thank you.
I was paying attention.
I just wanted to have that recognized. All right.
All right, our next question is an online question, and we'll go to another one here in the room. This is from Mary Hyman. She says, "I know someone who works for the state of Maryland, and they are allowed to donate leave to coworkers in need who would otherwise lose pay. I know someone here at the college who was very ill with cancer, and coworkers wanted to donate leave, but she was, but were told it's not allowed. Can you address the reasoning behind Montgomery College's stance on not being able to donate leave to coworkers who don't have enough leave and hospitalized or recuperating from surgery slash illness, serious illness?"
So somebody told me I have an answer on the iPad on this, but let me first give you the one answer that I think is important about this. There might be an official one, but see, y'all can know how unvetted I am in this. How old is our leave policy, Dr. King?
Oh, mine, 1987.
So the last time the college's leave policy was taken to the Board of Trustees for update was in 1987. This is important because the other day, we had to review it for an issue, and it became very apparent that, whoa, maybe there needs to be a review of this policy. So our current existing board policy does not allow for the leave sharing that it is now. That being said, let me see what else, because you might have told me something more important. Let me see. Okay, oh, okay, so here's a good answer here, from Karen Bass in H R D. "The reason we have not developed a sick bank is because we have a robust short-term disability program that has no waiting period, which is a huge deal. We have not encountered a situation where having a sick bank would be a value added because our benefits design is comprehensive and there's usually a bridge for employees. Also, in our retirement plan design, employees get credit for unused sick leave. Also, generally, such a, such a design is complex. There may be fiscal, tax, legal, and employee relations implications that we would need to explore. We can look into this further and provide pros and cons that should this issue come up again in the future." So Dr. Womack, I'd love for you all to look at that issue. One of the things that, and you're, I love, this is why you just don't have the president answer questions, right? Because obviously, we have an old policy, but one of the reasons that important, there are lots of issues that become inherent. So one of the things I thought about, say, if I give, you know, this beautiful woman in front of me, I always forget your name.
Liliana.
Liliana. Give her, give her my leave, and all of a sudden, something happens to me, and I don't have leave. What happens? There's a whole nother issue that you kind of create this domino effect. That being said, as an employer, and we want to be a destination employer, we want to have benefits, which I think Karen described that we have, but if there are shortcomings, let's sit down and have a conversation about that.
Okay, we have another question from here in the room. Your friend in the front row.
Talk about transition.
Hi, Dr. Pollard. Nice to see you, and thank you for coming to our home in Gaithersburg.
Happy to be here.
My name is Liliana Arango. I'm a Program Director for Workforce Development and Continued Education, and I have a couple of things here to talk. One, the, following what Ray was saying about scholarships, we have here a large population of students who are undocumented. And those students don't have the monetary resources to come to a college sometimes. They're eager to study, but they don't have, you know, their resources, and they're not, they don't have any, any kind of assistance or scholarship. I wonder if it will be possible, you know, maybe to have some kind of scholarship if the students can prove that they are paying taxes, federal taxes and Maryland taxes? Because I think basically, this is the issue, that we assumed undocumented people don't pay taxes, or they don't, and it's not like that, you know? So.
So I don't know that. What I can do is, I can, I can find out, you got put on hold. I can, I can do a couple of things in regards to that. I do know that the foundation does have a set of scholarships that they have made available based on some generous donors to help, and I think it's specifically called the Dreamer Scholarship. Now, that certainly is one component of this broader population you're speaking of. So I think we have to have that conversation. The other thing I think is important about what you're saying is also, we have to do some education in our community. There are some who are very, very specific when they make gift requests to the, bequests that this is related to this particular population. It cannot include these populations. So we have to do some education in that regard. And the other thing I think you're making a very compelling case about is to think about how we can go out then and generate new scholarship money that can help be in this population. So I think, I think you're correct. We are doing some of that right now, but we certainly need to be doing more because it's a growing recognition that we have within our organization and community.
And now talking about small programs.
Yes.
And the little thing, this is your invitation for our new program.
Well, thank you. Translation Interpretation Institute. So let me help plug this, everyone. Summer 2014, you wish to start a career as an interpreter in your community. This is your opportunity. It starts coming this fall, and you can contact Liliana at 240-567-3824.
Thank you for the commercial.
You're welcome. No problem. All about the marketing, right?
Another question right here in the front row.
Hi. Dr. Pollard, I'm Judy Harwood. I, I think I was the person that one of the prior questions was about. And what Karen's response doesn't address is, are people like me that I, I was working as much as I could, but in, in the meantime, I was getting treatment, so I was missing days, so I, am I not talking loud enough? I was, I was missing days, and, and so.
And therefore, not accruing more.
Yes, and at the end of the year, people who were not using their leave wanted to donate it and could not. So it went to waste as far as they were concerned. The other thing while I have your ear is.
So can I just respond to that one?
Yes.
I'm going to ask Dr. Womack and Karen if they could have a conversation, because I want to make sure that we are responsive to you as an employer, and that's an important thing, things that we can do legally right now. But the other part is that we are going to look at the policy and to figure out what strategies we can. My other question is, how are you doing?
I'm doing fine, thank you very much. The other thing is, is I'm finishing up my LDI because I couldn't last year, and my project is a blood drive. And so I wanted to let you know that your camera person and your moderator have agreed to donate blood.
I will as well.
Oh, that's wonderful.
I'd be happy to.
That was my next question. It's April 3rd.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
If you'd send me an email to my office, April 3rd, if I can do it, I would definitely. I give blood regularly, so this is a good thing to know.
And they're also screening for sickle cell anemia, so I wanted an opportunity to give back to all the people who had, who had given to me.
What a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions in the room before I ask another online question? Oh, okay. Looks like we're ready to go back to online. This is from, I'm going to use her parentheses, Sepi, Yusefi, from Financial Aid. "Thank you for taking the time to read my question. In light of the recent data breach at the University of Maryland and what seems to be an increase in targeting of higher education institutions, I'm very concerned about the protection of our personal data and that of our family members who may have social security numbers and date of birth information on file with the college for benefits, et cetera. As a longtime employee and former student, when the college used S S Ns, social security numbers, as ID numbers, I would like to know what steps our IT department has and is currently taking to protect the personal information of the college community."
Thank you very much. I had somebody send me some information about this, so I wanted to make sure I pulled it up. A couple of things. We do know that, and I love the context in which that question was stated, there are lots of things right now attacking our integrity systems, not only as it relates to higher education. You know, those of us who shop at Target, we all know that this is a reality. Then we heard a couple of other stores recently had this same phenomenon. So I do think that we know that this is, this is the new reality about how our data and our information, it is now the commodity, right? It's the access by which they have to your life. And at higher ed, I would offer to you, we are one of those prime spots at this point because we have so much information that we have to collect about students and employees. We keep it for such a long period because we have to have it, and therefore, the volume of it is very significant. And then the other thing is typically, when we have our students, you know, many of them go on to have very lucrative careers, so sometimes people, it's advantageous for them to want to, to pursue that. That being said, we have, I think, one of the best teams in the business looking at what happens at Montgomery College. As was alluded to, we no longer use social security numbers. I think we stopped that in 2007, if I'm looking at my notes, because somebody sent me some notes on this. We still use an M-number, which is your college ID, your employee ID. They're very separate than your social security number. We do, though, for purposes of IRS and other reporting bodies, have to collect social security numbers. We'll never get around that. So as a part of that, we spend a lot of time, Donna Shin and I see in the room, I'm going to turn this over to in a moment, because you probably speak eloquently about this than I, and Patrick Feehan spends a lot of time looking at these issues. One, we should also have to own our responsibility in this, right? And I will admit, I'm one of the laziest ones about this, passing out our passwords, right? Or making them something that everybody in your whole family knows. Like, if I made mine Miles, Miles 2007, that's about the stupidest thing I can do, right? Because if somebody wanted to sit down and try and figure out what those systems are, they're going to go through your family members, they're going to go through dates of birth, all those types of things. I laughed at a friend of mine who runs a computer business, and we were buying something online, and he was up there, and he said, okay, and we said, we need your password. He ran down this 20-digit alphanumeric thing, and we're like, okay, you're going to have to go one by one so I can do it, because he said, you need to have a password that is for real. And I, he said, and you need to find something that you can keep it and remember it, he said, but you need passwords that are for, so we have to own our responsibility in that as well. All these little phishing emails will come out, and we send them out, all the information you put out about yourselves and your signatures as well. That's an important thing to think about. Sometimes I'm looking on here, look, you can find me on Facebook @, you can see my dog doing this. I mean, it's a, it's kind of amazing amounts of information. We got to own our responsibility in that. And then our IT system does a phenomenal job in that. So I'm going to turn it over to Donna, maybe you could talk a little bit about that. I got notes if you need them as well, but I think you probably won't.
Well, as Dr. Pollard so eloquently stated, the reality is that the threat of a cyber attack is constant, and therefore, our diligence has to be constant. It is a shared responsibility. We have a multi-pronged approach to try to put those preventions and interventions out there. Laying the foundation is an acceptable use policy, which we are in the process of updating right now. That provides guidance to the college community and expectations of users within the college community, how they use our resources. Out of the Office of Information Technology, we have a education and awareness program. We reach out to the students at the beginning of every semester. We have an information-rich cybersecurity site that can tell you all kinds of great things about how to protect yourself and compute safely. We are in the midst of an identity and access management initiative, and if you're a student or an employee, you remember last fall, you had to go in and claim your account, and this is moving forward so that we can make sure that the right people have access to the right information and only that information that they need to do their jobs. We also have physical security in place. If you go to, around any of our IT sites, you, you don't have access. It's a secured access environment. And then we have technical security in place, things like firewalls, those kinds of things. We don't talk openly about those things because that throws us out there as, as vulnerable. But protecting personally identifiable information, again, it's a shared responsibility, and we all need to make sure that we are practicing, you know, best practices associated to protecting our information and the information, quite frankly, that many of us are accountable for protecting and using in the right way.
Thank you, Donna. Yeah, I'd tell you a funny story about the claim your account. So I, I think they ran the claim your account for about two months or something, I don't remember how long it ran. So at the end of that time period, my lovely Ida, who is, as I call the boss of me, she walked in and she said, I got a message from IT, and they want to know if you need any help claiming your account. Because you have not claimed your account and the deadline is due. And I said, oh, boy. So I had to go, and I claimed my account. So I, I feel good about that, but even I got the gentle reminder to get your stuff done, get your stuff done. All right, go ahead.
Okay, we have another question from Mr. Kimball.
All right.
Well, it's kind of a follow-up on the cybersecurity thing.
I feel the plug coming in.
Yeah, well, of course. And, and I also want to plug somebody who I think is here in the room. He's a little bit shy, Dr. Ed Palazinski.
Yeah.
He was here before, there he is.
I'm not shy.
Oh, well, but, but anyway, and in terms of the One College approach, we educators are also very aware of this and trying to do whatever we can to help the community. The Networking Credit Department has a fabulous cybersecurity program. They've got two courses, one called Hardening of the, no, it's Hardening of the Infrastructure, which is a terrific course, and then another is Network Defense and Objectives. We've sent students up there to take those courses. Dr. Palazinski has worked very closely this semester with Lockheed Martin, and there are two new cybersecurity courses that Lockheed Martin is sponsoring with us here in W D C E through the Information Technology Institute. It's taken two semesters of Ed's work to put this together, and so we really want everybody to know about that. And then we also instituted two web security courses because a lot of the wormholes into the network are through the websites we're building. So we need to take care of those things, too, and that's where much of the new literature has come about and where, you know, WikiLeaks and some of the others are, are trying to attack through the websites. So we have to train our web development people better, too. So anyway, we are, we're trying to be on top of this as educators, and Donna will be happy to work with you. There are other things we could do, you know, we're always trying to come up with new ideas, like, do we need a CPod course? Could we have a, a course that talks about what we as consumers could do?
That's a great idea.
Would that perhaps, you know, sell in the marketplace and people be interested in that? Happy to talk about those things, too. But I do want to plug Ed's, two Lockheed Martin courses. Very high-end, very much in response with what, what's been going on here in Washington, DC generally, and Lockheed Martin wants to get their own employees on top of it and get new employees trained. And so, anyway, we're all working on that.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, we have an online question. This is from Maria Adams, and she wants to know, what are the possibilities for the college to develop a structured and meaningful mentoring program for staff and faculty who would like to progress into management positions, not including CPod offerings?
Yeah, this is actually one of, let me, if I, this is a subject near and dear to my heart for a lot of different reasons. I, I know for a fact that I am the product of lots of different things, but one of them, for whatever skills I have, is because of a series of leadership opportunities that were presented to me and training and support to go with them. And that is critical. It were, there were people who said to me, dear Ian, you're going to do this next in your life, let's figure out how to have you do that. And we're very intentional, even when I didn't want to hear them, to make sure that I could hear and see the potential for what I could and should be doing with my life. So this is something that's personally relevant to me. But it's also a national crisis right now. In fact, the heads of the six major community college associations for trustees, AACC, League for Innovation, Aspen Institute, I'm forgetting the other two that were involved with that, they've actually come together around this issue about the leadership crisis that is affecting higher education right now, particularly community colleges, due to a series of things that are happening. One, you have this issue of a mass exodus of highly experienced people who will be leaving higher education. It actually, you started this a few years ago, then the economy collapsed, so people stayed a little bit longer, according to the verb question, right? So people decided to stay. But the reality about that is that now the economy is getting better. We may not feel it all the time, but it is getting better. People will start People will start to make those natural exit out of an organization. So you've got that issue. That's the first phenomenon of these retirements that are happening. The second phenomenon is that as a result of, I think, poor support of public dollars for higher education, you saw the first thing we stopped doing in most of higher ed is we took money out of professional development. So we weren't growing our employees in ways that we can and should be doing that. We also, third phenomenon, we went, this is a pendulum in higher ed, we went to flattening everything out, right? So we wanted to pay all the decisions at the lowest level of the organization we can. Very important for different types of businesses, but the reality about that, it doesn't create career lattices for people. So you see yourself in one role and everything, everybody's in that same role. How do you move to the next level? How do you get a skill set? And how do you begin to look at growing within your organization? Now, to be clear, sometimes you have to grow outside of the organization you're in. That's a hard concept for people to hear sometimes, is, "I'm deeply invested in Montgomery College. I'm going to be here." I want you to be deeply invested. There's only one president. Right? Right, right? So I did have a person tell me they want to be president. I said, "Well, if you plan on being president in the next 15, 20 years, you got to go someplace else, right?" Because my intent is to be here to do that job. So you got to think about, okay, if I want to be doing this, what the roles and how do I position myself for that? I think the other thing, the last part about this is very important. We, there is a different set of competencies and skills, I think now, that are going to be required for leadership roles within. And I mean, leadership within an organization at every level or every employee group, but those who want to move into management, as Maria said, and to upper levels of administration, I would offer you that the skill set that may have traditionally gotten people to that pathway is not the skill set that's going to be needed within the next five to 10 years. Dare I even say the next three. Higher ed is changing rapidly. So part of what our profile has to be is how quickly we can adapt. And that's a hard thing for people, and to stay on top. Literally every morning, my alarm goes off, 5:30 give or take, 5:00, 5:15. I read in the bed for at least 15, 20 minutes. Where am I getting my great source of information half the time? Twitter.
Twitter.
Twitter. Because you know what happens? People that I follow, people who I respect, their ideas, they link different articles, right? And what do I do? I follow the link to these relevant articles, I think, and it's creating a consciousness about the issue. And I write it on my, by my best, I have a little pad and I write down, follow up on this issue later. And then maybe on the weekend, if I have time, I'll go and do my own research in a much more thoughtful way. Very important to think about how information is coming to us, how we access that information, how we think about the roles we have. You know, going to a question we had at the top of the hour about auxiliary services. Every college and university in the country 20 or 30 years ago created auxiliary service. And we saw growth in auxiliary services. They were really, in a lot of ways, the thing that helped sustain the organization through very difficult times because you had bookstore sales, you had food sales, you had all those types of things that were happening in higher ed and auxiliary services really did that. But guess what happened, y'all? Y'all know what's happening. Now, we're students, and you say this all the time, if you ever spend time on the college's Facebook page, you haven't done it, I challenge you to do it. Because you will learn so much about how our students think. I need this book for this class. They are bartering with each other on our Facebook page. They are thinking, "Oh, I found this at Amazon at a cheaper price." Or, you know what, you all want to meet me, we'll ride in a car instead of staying on campus for lunch and I'll take us to the town center and we can go meet up there, study, do X, Y, and Z, and, and have a meal. We have to think very differently about who our consumers are, how our employees are. I mean, the reality is that many of our employees, and we're not the generation of people who are going to work in an organization for 30 and 40 years. That's not going to happen too much more. People are going to move where their skill set is. We're a much more mobile country. It's interesting, there was a great piece on NPR a couple of weeks ago about why our country is becoming so red and blue. Because it used to be a part where we were more purple, but now we're becoming very red and blue because people can move to where they want to be, where people who think like them live. Very interesting idea. So you see parts of our country that are very much this and very much that. A lot of that is because of mobility that didn't exist 20, 30, 40 years ago. So things like that to think about. So what's that profile? I personally have been given a lot of idea about doing it, and not because I think I'm the best leader in the world, but because I have some passion around this, doing a presidential leadership series about this. It's an application-based initiative. You come into it, the idea that you're going to work on a specific project, you're going to do a case study, I mean, it's going to be rigorous. And I, because I need people who are going to be thinking and who think better than me. That's the other thing about this, we need people who think better than us to be a part of something, to help take our organization to the level that is going to be required of us in the next several years. So things for us to think about. Maria, thank you for that question. We need to do that. I'm making it, I think it's actually one of the things I talked to Janet about, it's a priority for the next fiscal year. So thank you for that, transition to that as well.
All right, we have a question here in the front row.
All right.
Dr. Pollard, you mentioned earlier, and please correct me if I'm wrong, about workforce development and continuing education having the largest enrollment. When O P I R sends out their semester, their semesterly report, typically they say credit class enrollment is up or down or whatever. Is it possible that we could be included in that information? I never see it.
Yeah, I'll ask them. And part of that, to be quite frank, uh-oh, Trey, comes from the fact that what we have to report to the, to the federal government, they typically ask us very specific information about our credit student enrollment and because, and there's a timeframe that that has to be responded to. Because you all are flexible and agile and responsive to the market, your credits and your enrollment has different timing, a different ebb and flow. So there's a different reporting process on that. So when I first got here, I never forget, I used to drive a crazy because I'd say, "Well, how many students do we really have?" I said, "Because I'm reading this, on one page it says this. I read it someplace else, it says this." She said, "Well," and I said, "Unduplicated," and we were going back and forth on this for a while, because I said, "We have this number of students. What percentage of them are credit? What percentage of them are non-credit? And when you sit down and just look at numbers and look at enrollment, there's a very clear reality, but the pattern of how we report oftentimes creates that. But I certainly will talk with O I R about that because I think it makes great sense."
Do we have any other questions? We have time for about one more question. Anyone with a question in the room? Anyone with a comment in the room? Oh, here we go. One last question.
I asked this the last time you were here.
Okay. Did I answer it then?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But it's a movable question. And I asked you, we were in a very different place at that point, I think. I asked you what was keeping you up at night and what we could do to help you. So it's as applicable today as it probably was then, so I'm asking it again.
You, I love this woman because we have these conversations every once in a while and you're very true. The last time we were here, there were a different set of things keeping me awake. There are two things that are interesting right now. I'm actually in the process of writing, because like every employee at this college, I have to be evaluated annually by the board. And I'm writing my self-evaluation right now to the board. And in that, there's a certain set of benchmarks that they've asked me to meet and we, I have to explain if I have or have not and where we are with that. And then I have a narrative, because you know, I'm an English teacher, I want them to, I want to give context. I want to give subtext. I want them to understand the text as it is written, right? So I'm working on that right now and I'm kind of, in my mind, here I am, at the end of this year, it'll be the end of my fourth year at Montgomery College. Right? Yeah, I'm excited, yeah. Thank you. And if I look at the ebb and flow of where we are as an organization, there, there is a lot that I think we've accomplished as an organization and so much more that we're going to do, but I sleep really well at night right now. And those issues are not the issues that I was, that was keeping me awake. If you view a couple of times, I say, "Oh, you're looking a little tired." Well, you know, I was looking a little tired. I am looking back, cut my hair. What should I think about that? Yeah, I went natural. Where's our cosmetology? Is she left? Joy? Yeah, I went natural. I said, "I'm simplifying, I'm working out now."